All the meetings. Uh, please follow the roll.
Mayor from town Will Coxon. Mayor Brown.
Present.
Council members, please.
Present.
Council member Tuesday.
Present.
Council member Dee Simmons.
Present.
Council member Jason. Council member King.
Present.
The five presidents are in form.
Uh, can we have a motion to excuse Mayor from town Will Coxon and council members Jason and speak?
Motion to excuse. Council member somebody that the council member will.
There's a second.
Yes, I can hear.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Anybody? I know that council member Jason will be here shortly. Everything from there. I believe he plans to be here. Um, next, and you please rise. Uh, that we didn't do available. I would intend a motion to move the agenda. They'll move. Does that?
Support.
On favor as the agenda presented. Yeah. And you're published. Alright. Now's our opportunity for public comments. Uh, while I don't see anyone in the audience and I do browse in the forum out here and then we'll see if there's anyone online. We're like, who else?
Nobody's on this call.
Nobody's on? But it maybe was. Nope. Alright, well, you know, unless any of the staff wants to talk to me or go to comment, we will close. Tell them comments. Alright, well, I'm gonna hand it over to our city. Let's get us started.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It is the end time for goal setting. And just a recap of our last meeting. Um, our department has introduced themselves to you and we listed what our goals are. Tonight, we have our facilitator uh here with us. Mrs. Sharonda Simmons. And I hope you received her bio in your packet. And so we're just excited um about her bringing her skills and talents to help us um to actually be able to visualize and actually transcribe what it is that we want to see um for our city for this upcoming fiscal year. So at this time, I'd like you to join me in welcoming Sharonda Simmons. Take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Is it easier if you all hear me this way or if I do talk with my mask on? You're all can hear me pretty clearly. Okay, perfect. Please just let me know. Well, I'm excited to be here. And so I'm Sharonda Simmons. I work as an equity and inclusion consultant, but mostly work for nonprofit um social impact organizations. I've got the pleasure of doing some work uh with Christopher and the DDA um around um an equity assessment for the downtown development authority. And so I think there's lots of good overlap between what you all were doing in terms of your goal setting and even some of the work that's happening on that. And so just to let you all know, my role here tonight is really to sort of serve as the facilitator. And so I've compiled some things that you all have come up with in terms of goals and what you're thinking of as focus areas. But my job is really to serve out the support and sort of help um in terms of of your capacity, sort of bringing those things together. But I do hope our conversation interacts because that is my facilitation style. Um, and I do welcome uh questions, thoughts, and feedback. So I just wanna throw that out there before we get started. So I know, Andrew, I think you've got my presentation. And so I will talk for a few moments and sort of share uh what came up. But um, Francis, Andrew and I, we've had some conversations. And so um, I did have to see that you all have given a thought or share that out. And then really, our time together will be having some generative conversations around what that looks like, if that works. Okay, I see some head now. Do we have that pulled up? Like, we may have some words that are cut off. Oh, okay.
Let me pull up the other one. It would just not have us.
Okay, sounds good. So I can get started. And so you won't see this first slide in the presentation, but um I'd like to read uh two statements. I sort of gave um just like you all have some, I have some management's homework as well to really think about our purpose together. So if you don't mind, I'll leave those to you all because I'd like it to ground our conversation if that works. So um, this is from our city manager. So our purpose is to strategically plan our resources and to align with our mission to create a sustainable future for our residents and to attract others to our community. And then from our city clear, the purpose of our time together is to prepare and have to be implemented over the next fiscal year that is sustainable socially, fiscally, and physically. A plan that will protect this city's residents from off of the economic status and their investment in this city. So essentially, our time together is really to think about how do you use the goal and the things that we come up with and look at um the creation of your budget really from a holistic standpoint. So that's really the whole of our time together. Um, and so our agenda is uh we did our introduction of welcome. If folks do have any questions or as we start talking, I will learn for people to just introduce themselves again. That's helpful for me. Um, but essentially, we just went over sort of the goal and purpose of our time together. I will share in the presentation right now some of the things that came up. Um, and it's a combination of the sheet that you all filled out um prior to and presentation from um our department. And after that, we'll have some reflection and we'll do a large debrief. And so we'll have some open conversation. Get some of your thoughts. I'll capture the notes. And then we'll talk about maybe how to move some of these goals forward. Okay, and so in terms of the key goals, you all should have received this. I believe this part of your package. So as you can see, it's been broken down and seen. But the that you all were given really is a summary of uh some of the key things and goals that came up. So more than half of um the council members and department heads really identified these three areas um as sort of high priority or areas of focus when talking about 2023. And so one of the main things that came up was increased support for community mental health and the creation of a non-emergency response. Because that came up more than several times um in uh what you had shared up, what you had noted as goals. And so some people may write even as you see in sort of the area section. People may have written things differently, but I tried to really summarize um and capture what's been writing. So that seemed like the first. And the second was increasing employee retention and morale. That seemed like the second thing that was really was sort of resounding as I looked in terms of what you all had shared out. And then the third was increased community engagement. So those are really the three things that I just wanna note sort of after all of this. Uh, if we could simplify these things as if the three things, um the non-emergency response team, of course, the community mental health, increased employee retention, and then increased community engagement. That's sort of the three areas that folks sort of overall know that is maybe high priority or areas that almost top of mind. And so there were sort of six priority areas or buckets um that I'd like us to maybe take through the lens of. I know there's things that might not totally fit under each of these, but these are really the six that came out. So public safety, economic development, operations and administration, community outreach and engagement, infrastructure, and then policies and procedures. And so these are sort of a summary, these overall goals. And so I'll just read one from each. I know that you all have that in your packet as well. But in terms of public safety, research and development of a non-emergency response plan. So doing some research and really sort of refining what that looks like. And then development of community conflict resolution or policing plan. So getting the community involved in terms of conflict resolution, things, the two big things around public safety. And then for economic development, redeveloping a long-term vacant site in the city, uh providing zoning text and amendments that limit parking uh minimums in support of housing occupancy limits came up as a theme for economic development. Then for operations and administration, um retaining existing employees um and trying to attract high-quality employees in the future, and then finding ways um to also first automate key processes. So that really came up uh sort of across departments, which really find ways to sort of sympathize and automate. And then for community outreach and engagement, increasing community partnerships and community relationships, enhancing how we share information with the public and residents, really getting folks involved in meaningful ways and finding multiple ways for outreach was something that came up from council members and then also the parties. Then for infrastructure, continuing uh to maintain the figures right away and associated infrastructure, continuing to improve recycling, yard waste, and other disposable services. So really refining um infrastructure coming up with an infrastructure plan is something that I also saw that was noted by multiple individuals as well. And then for six, policy and processes organized, a charter, commission to address the dated language and lack of language for the process, provide an online payment module for five and for all cities function. And so again, those were sort of the six areas that came up. And so these suggestions and recommendations that I'm going to share, you all obviously um and the roles that you have and the way that you interface with the community definitely have a lens and expertise. So again, I'm just here to provide those recommendations and suggestions. But from what I heard, uh from what was gathered, these are the things that I would at least like to pose to sort of support you all and use that work for, if that makes sense. So for suggestions, first, sort of establishing guidelines for identifying top priority goals. And so I just sort of shared what has been noted. But in the future, even sort of next step, uh really thinking about um is there sort of a rubric or ways to really think about what are the goals um and what's his highest priority? And then developing a strategy to address the longer-term goals. And so you may find that if you look in this document, there are some goals that um everything obviously is incredibly important, but some of those things, because we're just talking about really 2023, maybe longer term. And so you might not see it come on this document, but really suggesting for you all to really think about how do you stay intentional about some of those longer-term needs that have been addressed. And then second, hard periodic department update to increase communication between departments and council members. So finding a way to continue that line of communication. Because again, our big purpose for our time together is talking about how to do this from a holistic standpoint. And then the third suggestion is a whole by annual quarterly department updates to council members in order to forecast future goals and budgetary needs for this city. And so if there were sort of six simpler steps that uh could be recommended to you all, we can give a step. The one, developers incentives for low, medium, and high priority items. So obviously, you know, every budget has budgetary limits. And so really thinking about what is most important for this year, and then what's the plan for intentionality um over the next several months to, you know, a few years in terms of addressing the things that have been noted. Second, identify again those fiscal priorities for 2023, and then set those annual or those periodic dates uh for budgetary goals. So that when you all get to where you're making those decisions in February, there's already been conversations that have happened, you know, anywhere between four and six months in advance. So there's a little bit of that forecasting that allows to have those decisions being made with a lot of confidence. And then four, continue with community stakeholders and partners and residents to find a way to share those goals. Um, and then brainstorm opportunities for future collaboration and engagement. And so one ties into continuing, you know, just like we have an open forum, letting the community know what the goals are, but finding a new strategic ways to share that out. And then that continued uh engagement, which I know a lot of these individuals have. And fifth, map out community partners and stakeholders. I know that some of that has already been happening, of course, but really thinking about that in terms of uh your non-emergency plan and then thinking about community health initiatives. So what's happening with local um social service agencies, nonprofits, um really sort of assessing um what are the strengths of the council and what are the resources here? And then what can sort of be partnerships and collaborations with other organizations? And then six, work on a cross collaborative approach uh to employee retention hiring. That was again, that sort of third regal thing that came up for the party leaves that came up uh with some council members as well. But really thinking about um even in terms of research, one of the suggestions is really uh sort of researching the salaries uh for government employees and really finding um and making sure that people are are getting adequately paid for what's comparable for their position. And so I just wanna read off some reflection questions. I will go back to these, but a few things that I want you all to think about for our conversation. One, what has stuck out to you as you've sort of been um looking at the document that was in the back to you? So the summary, what things stuck out to you? Um, where would resources best be allocated at this point in time? And then what would sustain the work from previous years? And so what does it look like to sort of build upon what already has been happening? Um, what seems like your most feasible goal? And then what seems like the most clear and critical next step? So again, I'll go back to some of these questions. If those are still the first thing that I want you to think about, what's coming up? What have you noticed? What sort of moves work for, that you all have have already been working on? And then how do we talk about those clear next questions? And for right now, um I will pause this and then I'll go um back to the question. So I will open it up for any maybe initial reaction or thoughts that are coming up.
Well, I think my first reaction is I'm glad to see that those initial like three key goals were more than fifty percent of individuals. We were on the same page around some high priority means. Um, you know, not only within the community, but within city, like city structure. And how we, the last one, you know, how do we better engage with the community? Uh, because it's an ongoing conversation and we've tried a lot of things and we don't, you know, there's no one right answer, I think, as to where the community looks. So it's still up there as a priority.
And I will say that fifty percent was sort of my conservative. But it is honestly, it was more than about seventy percent. Like, it was actually a very high um sort of theme that came up in particular areas. And I said that over half of the B C service, but it was actually more than that.
Well, yeah, thank you. Um, it's gonna take me a bit to kind of go through everything, but um one of the things that I think I notice, I see like a lot of things kind of showing up in different places, which is great. One thing that I saw that is missing um for, at least like is definitely a high priority for me, which is around housing. Um, and um, and I'm thinking, you know, even when I look at these three priority goals, you know, I could see it fitting in terms of like supportive community mental health, really, um in terms of understanding how much stress and unsettlement that um our housing situation kind of present. So anyway, I just am naming that that's definitely a place where I see that there's um not anything that kind of hits on housing, even though we know it's such a major um need here.
And I thank you uh couple of members for naming that because one, that actually was what I would say towards what six came up in conversation. And then what I will do from our time together is I'll also capture some notes for our five of the tools of it and make some sense of that. And so again, by no means uh and just sort of, you know, far as that is from this, I will have to do this work. But because I know that I was supporting you to think about with intentionality, the hope is that this will be successful.
And I also think that sometimes um when we are already like working really hard on something, then when you add, like when you submit, for me, when I submitted my new goal, I was thinking about things we haven't touched yet. And I think that housing is like on everybody's mind. And so I just assumed that that would be like a part of this conversation that automatically go on our list because that is at the forefront of what most of us want, want to be working.
Anybody see anybody else else?
So I guess um I also didn't see anything about youth on there. Where did that fall at?
So there were a couple um things that were noted in terms of youth. I would put that under community engagement. In terms of populations that seemed um to sort of come up or in the means were thinking about open population, so thinking about individuals um with a lower socioeconomic status, or thinking about individuals who are less someone, have housing, or those maybe who are in low housing. And so there were a few things that came up uh with young people, but I would put that under um maybe a couple of the two populations uh that you all were getting.
Thank you.
Of course. Were there any other things that initially stuck out to people? Uh, things that maybe weren't the primary or things that people just wanna know for a time? I think we need people looking. So maybe I'll give another moment of a little bit of quietness for people to give a look at those, those areas.
I have a, I have one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
The increased community engagement. I know communications plans, the strategies come up again and again and again. Um, we've tried a lot of different things. We have a public participation plan that describes the both um digital and physical stuff that we do. Uh, but at the end of the day, if people aren't showing up and they're not engaged and they don't know about things, like clearly what you're doing isn't working. And so when we talk about that, I'd like to be very specific about new things that we could try that we're not already doing. Um, and I think it often involves putting money into those things, like when it comes to doing mailings. We have no budget to do mailings. And um just like Elise in our office said, the township center a whole packet of things that she needs to know, anything that she needs to know about living in the township. Um, I'm not suggesting we do exactly that, but things like that could go a long way.
Yeah, I I tend to agree because the communication strategy keeps coming up over and over. And we have not really talked about what that looks like because we do have policies that have been adopted. As Christopher said, we have the public participation plan. We have a social media policy which talks about um, you know, putting things on Facebook and articles. And we tried to articulate this to our communications manager, and it hasn't all come, you know, come out right. So we do need some direction on what that looks like. Because we've adopted these plans, but we haven't actually done now. And like you said, we we've done them. We haven't gotten the participation maybe from the public. So um everybody keeps saying a communication strategy, you know, a communications plan. And and I don't know if they're remembering these things that we have um and how we have to make those work. So I think some clear steps. Don't you agree, Christopher?
Yeah, I I think you summarized exactly what I was um trying to articulate.
And if I could share one thing, um, if you don't mind, share from our conversation of with the DA, when we talk about like community participation and outreach, there's always a way that individuals within a room can go, hey, this is great. We are gonna be people. And then I'm so excited. But those are coming from people who are already in the room, already actively participating, sort of like precincts that require, people say it that way. Sometimes you get the same people that show up right to a big council meeting. You get the same people that show up to events. And so one, what does it look like? Um, and this is just me sort of offering a suggestion to you all. What does it look like to um, which is the conversation we've been having with the DDA? What does it look like to talk to individual stakeholders who you already know and trust, who will tell you the truth? Who know about, you know, um what you all do and can sort of share um what goes, what's working well, maybe where other people are struggling or where those gaps are. And then where do you go to those other individuals who don't know or who don't have that same level of engagement? And so one of the things that we're working on is coming up with some focus groups and coming up with some virtual and in-person ways to have some community conversations around people's experiences with the DDA. It's sort of a mixture. So like survey, we're having, you know, some in-person conversations, virtual conversations, and a mixture of people who um I would say are valued as stakeholders who participate. And then trying to find some individuals who maybe don't have that same kind of experience. But I think sometimes what happens when we talk about strategy work is it can be very um either internal or siloed. And sometimes even when we're talking about these goals, the suggestion is to always sometimes sort of uh throw that out or share that back out with the community because they're going to always see something um because of the person that's happening here that just may be missed, like they've got a different perspective. And that was one of the things that did come up a few times as well, was thinking about diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I do just wanna name that really finding some ways to have these communication strategies, some things beyond, you know, either social media or individuals who maybe don't have access to to laptops and computers. Like, what are the ways that people are being communicated to? How are you doing outreach? But just thinking about that communication plan, what are the ways to sort of get some feedback from individuals outside of council or outside of department who are actually sending some that communication and getting some of that feedback would be something that I would make.
Yeah. So um, yeah, I think it's definitely really good to know, like, things that feel like just kind of cycle around over and over. Um, but just a couple of quick thoughts around like communication. Like, I think one is that um like when I think about how, when I talk about community engagement and communication, um, I'm also not only thinking about what staff needs to do or things that are coming through the official city communication, but also roles that I see council members play in that and supporting some of that um connection and outreach. And then the other thing I would just say is that um, you know, one of the things that that I listed as goals around neighborhood resilience and building up neighborhood hubs and associations and groups and having resources to help support that is also aimed at that kind of goal because then communication can happen within smaller subsets of the community, but that we would have, being able to have really strong relationship and outreach to be able to help that be more bidirectional. Um, and um, and so that that is also in hopes of helping to to act toward that goal. So.
Yeah.
Because we got into what Christopher said, I think the city is doing something because my wife tells me periodically what the city is doing and where we're going to be meeting. She sees that stuff on the internet. So I'm not sure exactly what we're doing on it, but I know there's something going on. The second thing is that Christopher mentioned was finances or money. And uh all the goals that we set, I think we have to look at the money. And I'm looking particularly at mental health. Because I think um globally, this is really something that's a state issue, state of Michigan, not the city of Albany. And historically, the state didn't pay care of this, but it's pushed out of the city. The global money's come to money. Perhaps we should think about lobbying to get some money of the state for this.
What I will ask, and I'm gonna throw a question out to you, but if you do have a pen, paper, or laptop, or if you're someone who you don't wanna do either of those, and you just need to process, that's okay. But I wanna throw out a few questions for you um for uh this next portion of our conversation. So one, similar to what was just noted in terms of having a community social plan, what work within the city of Islamic City needs to continue? So what work has been happening? But for the first question.
Your question is that what work has been happening?
Yeah. So yeah, so what, what, what initiatives have been happening over the past few years? Was, oh, go ahead. Yes. And then the second question would be based off of conversations that have been had um previously and even what people have noted in terms of goal, what work needs to continue to happen?
Say it again, please.
What work needs to continue to happen? So what work has happened over the previous years? So what work or initiatives have somewhere in that communication plan? Then what work needs to continue to happen? And then what areas of focus will help continue to sustain the needs of residents within the city of Epsom? So what areas of focus will help continue to sustain the needs of residents within the city of Epsom?
In terms of communication?
In general. So there are no right or wrong answers to these questions. Clearly, there's overlap between all three of you. But what has been happening? What's been happening in terms of conversations at council meetings? What's been happening within your department? What work needs to continue to happen in terms of what will offer the most beneficial for residents? And that's a lot, right? That might be 20 different things. I see some head maps. But what is it we've coming up on top of mind for the individuals in this?
Oh, I think all my own communication.
So I'll give people a moment to just think about that, but I would love to hear from council members and then also department leads was coming up for you as well. So anyone like to share? It could be all of those questions or just a few comments in terms of when you were reflecting on sort of existing work and things that we can do to happen to support the residents. Anyone like to share? It could be all of those questions or just a few comments in terms of when you were reflecting on sort of existing work and things that we can do to happen to support the residents.
I'll go first.
What?
I don't have everything because, you know, it's hard to kind of go through these these questions. But I I could say one thing that we've tried to do over the last few years since I've been here is really work to modernize our operations. It's something that we always get hiccups on with budget, but we keep pushing through and we keep pushing through. We know we need to do more of that. Because some of the things that are available online are are just now 10 years old and it feels long. So, you know, we also have been working diligently to improve our parks. That's something that we need to continue, but what actually does really, really well at. And I would say anyone who's gone to any of our parks over the past 10 years has seen a substantial improvement, and we have a little ways to go. But I think focusing on modernizing, making sure that all of our, for lack of a better word, our infrastructure is is solid, like, you know, over the last two years, besides the contract to really upgrade our technology. We have so much further to go, and I've been working with the city manager diligently to make sure that we can continue these processes, but we have to modernize. I think we're so good at so many things and some things we're not. And I think we know that, right? And really, what it comes down to now, and this is just the sad part of the council, is just budget. Because we've done all the lighter, quicker, cheaper that we really can. We have lighter, quicker, cheaper our asses off, pardon my language. But now it's it's hard, slow, and expensive. However, we have some ways to get through some of that, but I think really continuing to modernize. There are half of the things that people come into this building for that they don't have to come in here for. And they would prefer not to. Not that they don't like it. It's a beautiful building, right? But, but they really it's 2023. I said it during my presentation. It's 2023. We should do most of this with a click of the button on a phone. And, you know, some of our, well, I'm saying some of our our applications, BSNA is one that I truly think is a great tool. It doesn't work well on a phone. We don't have the internet, the online tool to do that. And so anyways, all of being said, we're doing really good. We need to do much better. Funding is usually the issue, and it will always be the issue in our city. It's been that way for seven years, buying your, you know, Francis 15, buying 10, 12, 15, like it's been that way for all of us.
I still can't take credit card payments at DBS. Wow.
Yeah.
I'm gonna fix that soon.
Thank you for noting that. I think I see some hands up over here because that was sort of modernizing, creating, you know, processes, like those were things that came up, streamlining, like really making, like having digital records. Particularly when I was looking at either department presentations or what was coming up when people were filling out that Excel form that came up like resounding. And when we talk about overlap, one of the ways that you retain people is you make their job easy or that you at least give them the ability to do their job, right? And so I, yeah, you give them the tools to do their job. That's usually what most people want at the end of the day, is the ability to to do the thing that they came here to do. And so one of the things that I would offer up for you all to think about in terms of the creation of your budget and thinking about your goals, many of these things will continue to get done because we have a very resilient community and we have real dedicated individuals, right? But when thinking about sustainability, when thinking about goals, what are the things that you need to happen that will allow our different departments to do their job? What are the things that need to happen that will allow our community members to really get the things that they need? But what, even sort of I appreciate you framing it that way, what's going to create a barrier if there's not a way to sort of address it or it doesn't become part of an intentional focus? And I just wanted to to throw that out. So I appreciate you saying that. But that was really digitizing records, thinking about really creating some clear system came up, I think, with almost every department. And so I just appreciate that being noted. I know there were some hands up over here that people maybe wanted to share.
Yes. Yeah. So, Joe, I think that's, you've made some excellent points. I mean, there could be, you know, plenty to, like, one thing I think we can really be proud of is that we've been doing well or improved and absolutely it could perks. I mean, you know, like a 90 day difference. Thanks to like staff's hard work and creativity and trying to bring up and things like that. I do want to give a shout out to communications because I do think we have improved that over the last few years. All right. I mean, we can probably do some more, but but it's hard too, right? Being with best efforts, it can be hard to get people to get out of their house and come show up someplace. So I kind of want to acknowledge that too. I mean, and it's not like we from a lot of trying. But yeah, I mean, a modernizing, I, yeah, I think that that's something that needs to be a priority. Because, right, you know, we're short staffed and we've got, you know, staff that are really maxed out and stuff. And so we can build an efficiency, make their life easier, be less of a benefit. Also, it's great. It's a, you know, makes life easier for our residents. And I also think that, you know, to me, I kind of feel like, you know, we really can't add one more thing until we kind of shore up what we're already doing, right? So whether we're talking about records and files and how we, you know, take payments and stuff, I mean, you know, we, right, we got to modernize, we got to do that better. We should be able to do that better. But I'm talking all the way down to kind of infrastructure, you know? I mean, you know, the whole state, right? We've got kind of failing infrastructure and, you know, those money that's, you know, coming and things, but if we don't invest in those things that we already have here, you know, to be adding one more new thing or whatever is kind of setting us up for disaster later on down the road. So to me, like, that to me is kind of my focus is like, how do we stabilize, you know, the things or improve the things that we already doing, you know, to make sure that we're, you know, kind of doing those well and focused on as well to set us up to that, you know, build on those, you know, bring other things in or whatever it is, you know, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Well.
Yeah, to follow up on that, I mean, one of the things I wrote down was the capital improvement plans that have really picked up in the last few years. You know, I first got on council, I didn't really recognize that was happening so much that it came, you know, after a couple of years, it became a much more detailed process and bring you to the work council in a strategic way. You know, the the inventory of ours, we're just in storm sewers, the bridges have all been, you know, evaluated by engineers. And so that's that's a work in progress. And I know we've got projects that are planned for the next couple of years. But that needs to continue. And those are huge things that we need to, you know, money from other sources, but there's still going to be matching funds and things like that that need to be put into that effort. I also had the police, the police department and, you know, this search for the chief has really brought to head some momentum that has been coming for a couple of years to reevaluate the performance of the department that's whole. And I think this this is the kind of precipitous event that is going to change it in a very rapid way. And that could be happening along with the infrastructure, you know, we went to, we moved to take out the dam that we have in town. And that's a huge infrastructure project that the planning for that is is coming to fruition. And, you know, we have grants that's due like another month, which should push it to, not time, but in terms of funding and to, you know, that's a big, huge athlete in this budget itself is to give that matching function.
Thank you. And I know people might not have had a chance to look at all those areas or things, the document that was sent out, but, you know, I tried to do was sort of really outline also those areas of focus and then overarching goals. But a big thing that came up, which I sort of put under objective, was the hiring of police chiefs, right? So that was something that came up. And then also thinking about the aspect, so there are some examples of what people noted of objectives or here are the things that we need to do to move that goal along forward. But there were a couple of things that you mentioned that were sort of right in line with a lot of what other people had noted as well. What about other individuals? I could give maybe one more person, either council member, individual from department. Yeah, sweet.
I mean, I could just piggyback off of what the airport congressman, as far as the police department and some of these of the goals that everybody's talking about, about the non-emergency response and mental health and all of those things. It really goes back to some of the other things that everybody's been talking about, which is the communication and the community outreach. And because if we're talking about basically completely revamping the way that we provide health and safety services and how we respond to calls for service, that has been driven by the community. And so how do we get them involved in that process and how do we determine what they actually want? What is, what does that look like to the community? Do they understand how the process works now for a mental health response? And how do we want it to look in the future? And so again, these things are just, they all, they're all intertwined together. So I think that communication is a big part of that.
Thank you for sharing that. I think that many of the things that were noted, which I think is really lovely to hear. I know that might be a strange word for a council meeting, but I'll use the word lovely to hear was, I think, across departments, council members, the need to get community members engaged, but opportunities for community members to make decisions and to give feedback with something that was noted. So, you know, that might not be something that goes in the budget, but it is a part of strategy, right? Or, you know, thinking about the communication plan might be influenced by the budget, but finding ways to involve community members might not be discussed at all, right, in terms of of a physical ask, but it is something that strategy wise is important. You're talking about revamping because it's people thinking about values, it's people thinking about how they show up in the community, what's the ask of, you know, our law enforcement or community members. So that's not something similar to a lot of decisions that can be made in silo. And so some of I know what's coming up is a little bit of, it feels maybe a little gray because some of it is thinking about what is strategy in order longer term conversations. But then also a lot of the conversation that Andrew Francis and I've had is like, how do we again think about this from a holistic standpoint? And so when you're talking about strategy, that influences where you put your dollars. When you think about the current reality of where the dollars are, then you may, you need to have strategy in terms of where, you know, more funds are are coming from. You know, anyone else have anything that they wanted to share?
Yeah, sweet.
You asked us to think about what work is happening now. Councilmember Simmons indicated affordable housing, and the staff has been working diligently on, I don't know, three, four, 500 units coming up, that it's going to be closing soon, so we have to work on finishing that.
Yeah. So as I, excuse me, as I listen to Chief Yucus and also I've been speaking with Councilmember Dee Simmons about engaging the public, and she mentioned the creation of neighborhood hubs and things of that nature. What came to my mind was something that had happened in the past, which was COPAC. I don't know who remembers COPAC, but it was a group and it had representatives from every neighborhood. They met periodically, I mean, you know, consistently, and the police department was a part of it.
Yes.
And so these individuals represented their wars, and they reported what was going on. They had this consistent feedback with the police department. And so it seemed to really, really work. And so I think that that's something that we could probably revisit because it's something that had worked. And I think because of resources, you know, that was something that kind of was eliminated, but since we're talking about it again, that tells me that it's necessary for us to take a look at how we could make those, you know, make something like that happen again. Do you remember Lieutenant Yucus? Do you remember COPAC?
Oh, yeah. And I think part of the issue also with this demise was just the neighborhood associations kind of started to get smaller and smaller and stop meeting so frequently. And many of them then went online. kind of started to get smaller and smaller and stopped meeting so frequently. And many of them then went online, you know, and became not so formalized. They have neighborhood Facebook groups and, uh, to distribute information now. And there was really no strategic plan of how to morph that into what COPAC was doing, which was, you know, physical meetings where we would all sit down in the same room and we would talk about, you know, like if this, for example, this community mental health response plan, right? That would have been the mechanism to get that out to the neighborhood associations and then the input would have come back. I thought there, so I think there was a couple of things that, that went on in there. Um, there were some economic things and then also, you know, the digital age really kind of changed the way that people meet. Um, so I think, I think just kind of felt victim to that, but it certainly was extremely successful when we had it.
I'll piggyback on that. And the, the neighborhood association, we used to go to the neighborhood association meetings regularly and do questions and answers with the citizens and that just doesn't happen anymore.
I appreciate all of you for bringing that up because thinking about your, your goal, your budget, thinking about strategy. Often what happens with any type of entity or organization, if things go through cycles, right? There might be a need for the community, you know, in twenty twelve, and obviously it's different in twenty seventeen. But then you come back around to twenty twenty-three and maybe that need exists again, or there's a way to pull from some historical knowledge around things that were happening before that could be relevant. So it could be, uh, part of, as you all talk about strategy. Could it be sort of doing like a landscape of these different community groups that are on Facebook and that have social media pages? And so reaching out to other individuals who are managing those pages or asking, you know, can we disseminate information or, you know, finding ways to, you know, even use Facebook as an online forum and sort of have those community groups invite individuals to, to hear what's going on. And so it sounds like there are things that have happened before that have worked in the past, which the encouraging thing is, can you go back and go, okay, what was not working about that? Or what can we take sort of the spirit of behind that, which is finding ways to move people where they are. So where they are might not be a physical community center anymore. Where they are for some people might be on Facebook. And so then how can, you know, strategically, how can you reach out to those maybe different groups and find ways and maybe you want to get some input around communication plans or around thinking about, you know, um, community mental health and, um, not emergency response plan. But I think that as you all were talking about those goals, it's really important for individuals who have been here to talk about what happened before, what was work, working, maybe what didn't work and really find a way to sort of marry, uh, the existing needs and then put that into chat.
Yeah. Just, um, just to this point and also in terms of thinking about, um, potential resources and resources from our, like, commissions around something like this. During the, uh, last sustainability commission meeting, uh, one of the things that the commissioners were talking about was actually putting together, um, something that would be able to go out to folks to get, um, information around these kind of neighborhoods groups. Um, to get a sense of what kind of things they would want to see built up and the poor thing might need and, and some different things like that. So I think that, um, this could be an area that we could have our commission also help to support in terms of doing that outreach, getting some of, doing some of those connections, um, too, that, uh, will hopefully help to build on, you know, this goal and, and help to help move some things along as well. So it's not, you know, just kind of sitting there is something that we want. So, um, the, I think that there could be ways that we could maybe get some information, um, about what kind of things are helpful for, um, staff to, to be able to disseminate. As you were talking about, R two hubs and things like that too, that we can have that be integrated into, into what they're looking to do as well.
Were there other things that were coming up that people want to tell us? Yeah.
What other thing that the city has done, kind of a communication, as I said, of the C fix, C like fix system, I'm not sure how it's working, but that's an outreach to the public.
How new is that? Basically, it's a recording system where you report things that need to be fixed. Um, and it hasn't, has it, well, it's kind of faded. It, it used to be a, a big problem. Um, it's not a problem, but it does get any loose. So when I say a problem, what I'm saying is internally.
Oh, yeah.
Because we have problems with people submitting multiple tickets over and over again, same thing. Um, you know, sometimes people just complaining and we've actually addressed their concern and closed their ticket out. And we, we open a ticket. Sometimes we didn't close tickets early enough. So we kind of had some internal like things, but.
That, that's a very light one. We had a couple, we, and we still do, and they still try to abuse the system, but, one property owner in particular is very upset with the neighbor and they use it to try to get us to do things we can't do. Perhaps we should reexamine it.
Well, it sounds like similar to even, um, what was noted before, sort of thinking about, um, having, um, streamlining maybe systems and like processes, things like that. Yes, have usage, which is helpful in the sense that people need know to use it and it's a resource, but things like it's a big maybe capacity ask for, uh, staff, or there's some things that make it a little bit more difficult to implement. I don't know. I want to make sure I'm not putting words in both mouth, but that's it as well.
Always opportunities for, you know, let's see, I want to.
There was a one with a text here.
So we had another one that we tried for a little bit that was called text my god. It really didn't work. Um, where they were, they were given a number, they could text there. You know, they're complaining or whatever. They could be driving the red lights out, you know, or something, whatever. It was just another way. Some people prefer to use their phone or whatever. And that never picked up at all. Um, and so we thought that was a good way, you know, another means of using technology too. But it never did. So we're always open for looking for other ways for people to get to us fast.
And I think similar to, to what we talked about, um, in terms of even, uh, via the show, uh, with the COPAC, what you all had mentioned before. I think things come in and out and as and flows. And I think we're willing to try something and realize that it may be, um, not meeting the need. It's also okay, right? It's into make pivot. And I think you all continue to do that because that's very important. Yeah.
Um, just, uh, one of the things we've done too, when it comes to, uh, retaining employees, we've just completed our, um, our draft negotiations with our, uh, unions. So, uh, when we did try to talk to them, we, we hope that, uh, it was the, they felt what they, they don't receive which is critical when you want to, you know, that we did keep providing to the city. So.
I appreciate because that was again, one of the, uh, three areas that came up, um, sort of like a boundary theme. I'd be interested to hear from, uh, department leaders and then maybe council members, like what you all see as sort of big areas of focus for twenty twenty-three in terms of retention, um, or what, uh, might be, um, the need either not for the twenty twenty-three budget, but sort of moving for around some, um, employee retention. Uh, professional development came up, uh, getting people within the community, uh, to, uh, serve in positions, um, within, uh, you know, at staff and employees also came up. But I just began to do it here, uh, because that was a big thing that sort of came up, uh, with some council members and also across the partners. Um, sort of what seems as maybe a key need going into this new year around sort of that, uh, employee retention professional development.
So what I've noticed when it comes to the, um, retention side and salary, we did have a salary study done. And last year we were trying to decide what type of organization did we want to be as far as, um, it relates to salary, you know, do we, do I want to be like on the cutting edge, you know, up here? You know, or do you want to be in the middle? We never really decided, but, um, we decided that we wanted to be competitive. I think that's kind of what we decided. But once COVID happened and now we're like post-COVID and we faced, uh, if on police challenges, we faced a lot of challenges. The workforce isn't the same as it was when we did the study. So now those numbers that we use are no longer the numbers. Everyone has cre- increased salaries, especially in the way of police, because we're trying to get police. So people are, you know, going higher and higher. And so, um, we had to take all of that into consideration during negotiations. So now we're at the place where, you know, do we continue with that salary schedule? Although it could be slightly outdated now because of, you know, people trying to gain employees. And now these numbers are slightly higher. I mean, people were only given like two and a half percent. Now people are given five. It's becoming like norm. We're getting our people sitting in front of us and we're looking at other people like, uh, you know, and so I mean, I guess that's something that will continue, will be continually looking at. Um, in order to keep the workforce, we've lost a lot of our very good employees because they were offered better. I mean, they were offered five, between five and ten percent with four days a week. You know, we couldn't top that. And so we're trying to offer other incentives that make us attractive. Um, and so, and not just merely salary, but so we're looking at other things. We're looking at being able to work from home. We're looking at fraternity leaves. We're looking at all kinds of things, um, that we can offer them. We're, we're going to start looking at, um, offering some more educational reimbursement, things that can attract, you know, people to us. So we're looking at that. We need to look at it holistically when we say retention, not just a salary, because I don't think we can keep up in that area. So just kind of want to put that up there.
I think that's a really good point. And I think again, what I want to know is, as we're having a conversation around budget and we're having a conversation around strategy, some things do require money and then some things require time, thoughtfulness and intentionality. And so like you said, you know, I do a lot of work with, with nonprofits, uh, sometimes startups with organizations where they're always trying to think about how to hire and recruit. And since COVID, everything has changed. One, we live in a global society and that has become more increasing since COVID, but people don't always want the salary increase. Studies show eighty-nine percent of people want to work for an organization where they feel like they have clear diversity, inclusion and equity goals. Only twenty percent of organizations have any kind of clients around diversity, equity, inclusion, but eighty-nine percent of people aren't asking for that. So that's something to think about. Most people are looking to work in a hybrid environment. Like that's a huge number that they want that flexibility, even thinking about, you know, um, fraternity leave. People are looking for like parental leave. So like our policies around mental health time, sick time, parental leave, are those updated in a way that it might not actually cost anything? But do the policies meet the needs of the communities or the staff? And so I think following to what you said, it might not be that there can be a five percent increase every year. But what does it look like for professional development? That's a big thing that people are really wanting, thinking about the costs of student loans, which so many of us know about, like more can be offset in terms of professional development opportunities. People really are looking for mentorship now too. Like that's a big thing that sometimes comes up in terms of what people are asking for in terms of a work environment. So it's not always about money, but it's about these ways to support their longer term career path. There's ways to, can they come to work and still want to be oriented? And like they can mentally maybe be in a healthy space. Um, and like you said, like, do they have some of that flexibility because of COVID and, and how the world is where they might have to, you know, be in a hybrid environment or thinking about women, like statistically, more folks who identify as women to be caretakers. So when COVID hit, if you're taking care of, um, you think in parents, if you're taking care of children and then you've got to be in a job where it's a hundred percent, you've got to be in person, people have to make different decisions versus the job where maybe it's eighty percent a person, twenty percent of that flexibility. And so again, just to kind of throw out what you had just said, what are the things that can be uh, areas of focus or areas where you're getting feedback from folks? Because feedback can be free. It takes time. But feedback can also be, it doesn't cost money to ask people what will make them stay. A lot of times organizations just do exit interviews that don't do anything in between. What do you want to feel good about the work that you do? What would make you stay here? What would make you feel engaged here? That conversation doesn't happen until someone left. And that's not really useful information because most of the time, even with exit interviews, they're not even using it. And so what are the ways that you can engage people and get that information that, that doesn't cost money or doesn't result in that? So I just appreciate you saying that, just in working with different organizations, similar to what you said, I think that's a lot.
Yeah. No, I just want to, you know, kind of echo the manager's statement. I think, you know, right on what you have to say and right. Um, we'd love to be maybe trying as much as we can for it. So at least being confident about that, right? However, we get traded and offering, I just think it's really important also, like, you know, we need to take care and, you know, stabilize things that we have. And that can be also included to the staff because they are in, uh, you know, resource that's really important. We have really great staff. So, you know, how do we take care of them, right? Um, so that we continue again, being able to provide good services, you know, to our, our residents and whatnot. So I think it's really important things to, you know, how are we, are we treating our people and recruiting people, you know?
And part of, and I see your hand up, I just wanted to know, part of being cutting edge or progressive, whatever language, uh, works best for you, is actually thinking about sustainability. Like if sometimes we're just trying to always add on and build and that's really that steam can run out, the money can run out. But organizations that people usually look at as more progressive, their values are clear. Everyone feel invested in their values. They have equity and inclusion policies and practices. They have ways where people are engaged. If people feel engaged in their work environment, they're three times more likely to stay within an organization. Um, when people feel like they're hurt, even if they don't like a decision is made, they are also about three times more likely to stay and be engaged. And so part of it is, it's not, like you said, it might not be feasible to do the financial aspect as fully as you may want, but some of the thoughtfulness and the intentionality with your policies, revamping some of your things. Those things, all of those don't cost money. They do cost time, which sometimes is money. But that is a part of, you know, if you're talking about being, say, you being an organization progressive, that, um, is another way that I would just offer up when you do that. And yes, that's on your handle.
In regard to what the city manager was talking about, the, uh, study being outdated. My wife, uh, once you come back from the grocery store, complains that the prices are going out of sight. There are forces out of our control that are affected by complaints.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the price of eggs. That's been like nine dollars.
And then I'm also wondering again, um, either for, for council members or, or department leaders, what are some other things that, um, because we talked a little bit about, um, sort of increased community engagement. I hear what's coming up is maybe, um, sort of refining ones that upon those communication plans or strategies. Um, but in terms of the, um, retention and engagement of employees, do you all have other things that would be helpful or need to be a focus, uh, for twenty twenty-three?
I think we, we've addressed a lot of these things in our labor negotiations, some of the things that we're going to see. Um, I think that some of the other things that are not financial, I think these are some things that we're we're in the process of doing. You know, um, we're now having, um, like dang of Christmas party, you know? Um, we're recognizing people's use of service. Um, and these are the things that, um, you know, are not things, you know, tangible, but there are things that make people feel good about themselves. So we're doing a lot of internal promotions, um, and giving people progressive steps to move up that we're investing in them as a person. So these are some of the, you know, our core value is to take care of ourselves. And, and it's not that we're not looking on the outside, but we are, you know, trying to identify employees and engage them and encourage them. Um, and, and a lot of people are staring, I would say, most of the people, we have had people, some of them, I believe. But, um, we are so. But um, we are so, I mean, we're so fortunate to have good department. But Bonnie, Bonnie's a newer one. She, she's kind, you know, she's, she's um been elevated through. Through the system and so she knows how to motivate. I mean, she was kind of on a progressive path and now she's getting her guys excited. So one of the things I'm trying to do with my leadership, this is before COVID, every now and then. Instead of having a regular. Uh, department meeting, sometimes we'd watch a video. And, you know, just to talk about, you know, like the difference between being efficient and effective. And because you're making deposits and stuff, so we're trying to do a little bit more of that. Um. I forgot what the question was.
What seems like maybe a key goal for twenty twenty-three? And I'm gonna ask maybe what things like, so part of the conversation right is around the budget and what priorities is that? What maybe things like a, a, a financial app or, or need to meet for the, you know, retention would be part of, of that.
Yeah, I think more recognition, you know, those kind of things. They're those kind of, it costs money sometimes. So if you want to give them a T-shirt maybe. You know, in five years, you want to give them a cup.
They do. Yeah.
Um, right, we've talked about different ways with retention in regards to salary that was mentioned, and I agree with all the statements that have been made about. Those two, but I also think. Some things that go together that we've talked about in this session that relates to employment around is our. Tech improvements. Do we have up to date equipment for our fire department? Do we have reliable equipment for our DPS crews? Like, are we setting our staff up for success with the equipment that they're using on a daily basis? That is also a reason that they're seeking equipment elsewhere that, you know, if we don't have things that are up to date. When it makes their job harder. You know, they're gonna move on to an organization that's, that things are easier. So keep a note in mind too, I think, when we're setting the budget. It's gonna, you know, long-term, both long-term investments that only improve our operations, but improve, I think, our staff. Um, morale and the way that they feel that they're getting invested in resources to help them.
A nice environment, a comfortable chair.
I mean, sometimes it's a little things like that, but yeah. Or the big things, you know? Air trucks, spy cars, you know? Pop trucks, like those things that are not glamorous or sexy, but we need them and they need to be working right, right? So.
So one of the things I've been doing as chief is uh trying to upgrade the little facilities. It's the same thing you're saying. And uh, I, I literally, I budget for each year, I try to do something around Christmas time that's a. A little bit beneficial for them and it may be a recliner, it may be a desk, it may be upgraded fast. Uh, from a twin size bed to a full size bed, but the small things spend in the fire department because they're there for twenty-four hours. And you gotta be comfortable and you gotta enjoy that environment, you gotta feel, even though it's a job, you gotta feel somewhat at home and you gotta feel comfortable there. So that's really a project of mine. So every year I, I ask for, you know, I, I started out asking for small sums. I think I got a manageable, manageable sum now, and I ask for that and I keep making small improvements.
And the reason why sometimes I always could you all to throw it back out, because you all know it a different way, right? Like what the need is. So there's this relationship, right, between you all making these decisions and advocating, you all really helping sort of. Um, in partnership, like doing some of that, move that one forward. So that's why sometimes if I go to department, it's sort of transparency is. You know, to be able, you know, how often are you always gonna have to do conversations that are making really, I mean, decisions, right? Well, I maybe do like a slight shift, like we talked a little bit about um community engagement. Uh, we talked about sort of the uh employee morale and retention. Uh, I kind of want to go back for a moment um to uh thinking about community mental health. And sort of a non-emergency response plan through the lens of thinking about the twenty twenty-three budget. Um, so I'm wondering, uh, either for department leaders or council members. What seems um like an investment that is maybe critical or of importance when we talk about um? You know, community mental health and sort of a non-emergency response plan for this year? And I can rephrase that too. I appreciate that. If ever you need me to rephrase, repeat, I can do that too. I tend to ask long questions, but sometimes I have to review them. But I appreciate, I appreciate the key rephrase that. So the three areas that we could initially talk about, and we can always talk about other areas that came up, like we were talking about young people, we're talking about housing. Um, what I'd like to ask for, you know, sort of the latter portion of our conversation is. Those three areas came up as things. So obviously I think there is time and energy that's been put into those efforts already. But because they came up as things and we're also talking about the twenty twenty-three goals and, and budget. Under each of those areas, like what are things that maybe um need to be considered in relation to the budget with um community engagement? Employee retention and then community mental health and the non-emergency response part. So that's sort of the second part that I'm asking you to maybe think about. Uh, as part of the conversation is, in terms of community mental health or the non-emergency response plan, is there money? That maybe needs to be put into it or what is, or what's, you know, what's the ask? In relation to um the budget? That's kind of my, is that helpful?
Yeah, I kind of want to get a visual from council of what the non-emergency. Response team would look like. You know, like. Would we have one employee located in the police department? That is responsible for a team of people, you know, that they triage what happens. And they have the connection with the mental health profession with, I don't know, who, you know, whoever needs to be on this team. Cause I need to get a visual. Myself of what. That looks like.
And I always pose, I, I don't know, I think it's helpful, helpful, but if there's someone that's like, I know it's needed, but I don't know. I'll offer you all to share that as well. Throw your hand up and then come and go around this way.
Social worker, I'm going to. Yeah, so I don't think that's something we can necessarily do alone. And so I was actually in a meeting um today. The city of Ann Arbor is looking into this and they hired a. Um. An outside, uh, or, you know, to kind of look into this new survey, so I was talking with them today. Um, and so one of my things that suggested to them was, you know, instead of doing it siloed in the city of Ann Arbor, like why, why couldn't this be? You know, countywide or, you know, somehow partnering um with other municipalities, because I don't see how they're gonna be able to get kind of their money's worth either by doing it just all on their own. From a financial standpoint, um, so that was one of the things. So I'd ask them to. Tell me some more information because, you know, this to me seems like something that might be worthwhile, you know, again, partnering to make it. More robust than just one person, because wouldn't we rather have kind of a twenty-four seven response or, you know, whatever. So. So from, in my mind and vision is that it's not necessarily just all us, you know, hiring one person, because I don't think like a. I mean, while it's a small improvement, I just, I just feel like it's bigger than that. Um, and, you know, then partnering would be better. And there are people are doing this work elsewhere in this county, so why would we, you know, maybe not talk to them and. Either join in or, you know, uh, or, you know, at least get ideas. They're sure, sure doing a lot of lab work. So that's something I'm gonna. Share coming soon in the future, when I get more information from them, so that we can think about this and consider it.
Yeah, so to. So um, let's do something. I, I don't think the idea for those who have been interested was to have one person. This is. To move away from the idea of having a social workstation somewhere and having literally a group of people. Who support with this um crisis response team. So I also have been talking to Taylor, because she did talk to me about the fact that they are working on it and. Professor Keith, um, who has been attending a lot of our city council meetings, was a part of a group that I had already met with that. Has done a lot of research and is working with Ann Arbor. Um, and led them up to the point of them obtaining the consultant or whatever, upon the person to build this out for the city. And. My dream would be, would be a collaborative approach, but even if we couldn't do that right away to have. Um, whether it be community volunteers, you know, folks who have, um. Some folks who have some expertise around, you know, social work world and mental health, and then some who don't, who are volunteering to. To, to go out. I don't believe that it should be housed in the police department. Um, and that has never been on my mind whatsoever. I even thought about, maybe it could be housed in the fire department, somewhere that is outside of um law enforcement. Um, but it was, we were following, when I was talking to Keith, what Ann Arbor was doing to see how that worked and then. Since I've been in more connection with Mary Taylor, that was a part of the conversation, how do we? Pull resources, because we have limited resources and they have more than we do. And we have a chair department who was trying to figure out how to work the CMH and. How to make that work. So everybody's kind of on the same page, but doing it a little differently, have a little bit of a different vision. So how do we all come together at the table and figure out, you know, what can we do together again to spread our resources across the board, um, because we have similar needs. You know, in terms of our residents and constituents, but also not saying that we don't do anything here. Um, in the meantime, because we're waiting to see what they're going to do. Um, because I think that's something that we have done in the past, we're like, we're gonna wait to see what the sheriff department does. And then we don't get any, you know, we don't get anything directly out of that, so. When I say my brain is doing a lot, it's like a two-pronged approach to me to, yeah, it's partnering is really important, but also we have need right now. And there are things we can do that do cost money, but we can do it right now. Um, if we come together to come up with an approach, you know, and utilize information that are in town, we'll, we'll start this process. I don't think a social worker, in the way that we thought about it, would work because we don't have the, the structure. For it to work in the way that we thought it could. And also. Um. It was just, it was just too hard, right? We only had budget, budgeted for one person and that just simply isn't enough. Uh, we would have needed more people for it to work, even in the way that we were thinking about it. We don't have the funds for that, so. Set that aside. That's more, more feasible. You're right, because they were concerned, remember, and I didn't like you, so I was like, shit, am I gonna be on call? Like, you know, and, and it would make sense because again, you know, one person could come together, like, we're after station, we're after, get up in the middle of the night, but. It was a lot. And while other communities, you have like social work, like the, the sheriff department does have this social work component, but it's because they're utilizing the CMH. And has a team, it's not one person in the sheriff department doing that work and we didn't have that kind of access.
Right.
Um, for a lot of reasons, because we probably could have. But we, we didn't at the time, and so it's time to think about it, reimagine it, literally, um, in a different way.
I think it's, I'd like to say, I feel actually after my meeting I had today, that I think there's a lot of potential for. Some partnership, you know, that can be looked at, so that we don't have to go like, I don't know what that looks like, I'm sure it was involved, I'm just saying. To me, like, you know, when I think about you sitting under, like. I wouldn't worry about from my perspective, because we're, we're gonna do this one thing all in, I think it's developing and I think. To me, it's gonna be something, you know, there's gonna be some type of working together, you know, and that's what we would be for maximizing, but whatever.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. So um, this is, this is an area that kind of blends like multiple of my roles, so. Um, but this is something, you know, so with happening in Ann Arbor, I've been involved from like, and, and. Have been tracking it, um, and also doing some work. Around it, um, since it's been going on. So I'm definitely glad that y'all are having these meetings and connecting with them and. I've been involved with the process, both in terms of giving feedback to the, so they have P S B. Public services consultants, um, are doing this process. They're currently doing their community outreach work for that. Um, and just in terms of thinking about timeline, um. That indications are that they're probably finishing that like in March and kind of move forward some recommendations in terms of. What, what that team could look like or what the ways to move forward could be. Which don't, uh, which also include, um, not actually having it uh housed within the city. Um, but having it housed somewhere else. Having another organization to do that. So just want to give that context, which also then lifts to um. Work that. I'm currently a, a part of, which I've mentioned before, but just to say in this space, because I think it. Does play into the budget in terms of what it could look like, you know, how it could look differently if you're not, if the city is not trying to create its own thing. But it's connecting with partners and an external group. And so, um. Currently there's a group that is in part working to be prepared for when the RFP comes out from the city of Ann Arbor. Um, to be prepared and ready and have a, um, you know, have a lot of backing, support and funding. Um, and so within that work, um, because we agreed, you know, when. Started to say like, what would this look like? We're like, we can't, when we look at Ann Arbor, we have to look at it to see. Because some of us are like, iffy snobs like me, so, um. And so as part of that, that, that's been part of that design to look at and to, to think about that, and so. Um, just want to say that one, this group is, is going, is, is getting funding and looking to work. Do this work irrespective, like, uh, regardless of. The Ann Arbor fund money, even though, um, as well as wanting that, you know, or thinking about what it would look like to be prepared for that. Um, but that they're looking to do work regardless and have also secured some funding. Um, from um, the national, national funding to help support. Piloting at D C. So again, this is separate from what funding would come from Ann Arbor. Um, and, um, and um, a couple of things just in terms of looking at that budget, because I know this is also thinking about like, well, what does it look like in terms of some funding pieces? And so just preliminary, this is all like still being worked out, but I just wanted to name that when I checked in with. One of um the folks who've been looking at this and pulling together the budget, um, and thinking about some funding pieces. He named that. Some things that were not, have not been funded yet, um. Is one, um, some of the different, um. Some of the different um operating costs, which um includes like things like supplies. Some of the um vehicle maintenance and um insurance and things of that sort. Um, which include both ongoing and one-time cost, like a vehicle, the one-time cost to purchase. Um, so that that was budgeted out at eighty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars. And then also, um, the funding for dispatch, which includes. Salary. Um, and different things, and that was a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Um, and so. That is just wanting to put out the, those are things that so far within this. Have not been funded yet. Um, doesn't mean that there won't be other funding that we will be able to secure for that, so. Doesn't mean that too, because I think the net's gonna be set to roll out this year, um, and so there will be an opportunity for the city to. Actually connect within that, with that, so. Um, and that, uh, will look to have both urgent response as well as. Um, community, um. Uh. The. I'm like, uh, community capacity building, um, uh, efforts. Um, to do things like conflict resolution and, and other things that can happen within neighborhoods, so. I just want to like offer that up to be something as we're thinking about this, um, you know, it doesn't have to be this, but that this will be an opportunity that will prevent itself. Um, and we'll have some funding and things behind it. Thank you. And then I saw, I think. There's, yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say again, I mean, for funding. It all goes back to, again, what, what is, what is the response going to look like, right? So it's, it's really hard to, to throw those things out there. I do know. We only have one system right now. Right, and that's. That's the police department. That's who responds to every, every one of these, these calls for people that are in crisis. I mean, yesterday before noon, they had gone to four of them. Right? Uh, and a great deal of those in the current model. The paramedics won't go arrival until the police are there. Uh, CMH, even their outreach team, most times won't go rival until the police are there. So there are some fundamental. Non-budgetary things that need to be worked out, but as far as just the budget goes. And, and we have to figure out if there's something that we can do. While this long-term plan is being implemented. The way we're, we're doing it right now. Is, in its lane, is, is so far been working, but it is not working well, is not the right solution, so. I don't know if council has some suggestions on what we can do budgetarily in this next year. To improve what we have while we're waiting for something else to come in, that would just be my suggestion, that you could provide some. Maybe some of your thoughts on that. Maybe some of your thoughts on that.
I just have a question about the, uh, you know, this, this is gonna take funding through a number of different funds within the city. Right? And, and the only thing that I know that's been earmarked was a salary for the, the social worker. And, and I'd like to get some clarification on what that was. Yeah, I got the impression that that was not, uh, satisfactory to people that we need, but, um, and, and.
It wasn't so much boundary as. The task, you know, the tasks weren't clearly defined because no one had done this. Um, so they were actually being charged with developing, you know, a response plan. And so they had a lot of questions for us that we weren't able to answer. We were like, do I have to be on call? Do I have to get up, you know, all the time, you know, do I have to go off to the scene? You know, they had all these questions. That, um. And, and so they did that out, right? Cause they work every day, all the time, and only one person. At what, you know, at what point would I be able to, um, contract with someone? You know, and so those are mainly the questions I was saying. I think the salary resort was in the big piece. Yeah, I think, uh, yeah, it was. So no one, well, there was only one person that wanted more, 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 wanted more, but they really didn't have the experience anyway, but.
Right. And that's kind of where, if you're asking someone to design a program in that task, we're moving with that. I, I, I love the answer that it would be good. Um, you know, we're, I think we still need a point person within the city to do all of this, you know, so it's gonna be. Police Department to, to figure out what the proper response, communicating with each other, or speaking outside, communicating with CMH. All that is being coordinated by somebody within the city, whether that's a full-time. Um, gig or whether that, you know, even needs to be a social worker. Is, is, is up for grabs, but I'm just kind of trying to figure out. How much we budgeted for this general conversation in the past, and fifty thousand dollars with other things in order. You know, the budget items. Um, that'd be nice to know, Dave, when, you know, we're talking, you know, eighty-nine thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. Or just kind of privatizing with another group. You know, how much can, if we've been thinking fifty thousand, do we get out of that? You know, do we need to double that? Do we need to, how, how progressive do we have to be? What we're putting in now, what we're putting, you know, your, your next five years.
Yeah, I think the point person we would have to budget for as well as whatever our contract obligations would be. You know, to be, I don't think that will have all of these people.
I guess I'm interested in like a brief overview of what the current project is, because I'm not one hundred percent sure.
So, um, you could, that's why how we respond or how we decide it as a mental health.
Yeah, I mean, basically all, is all these calls come in through central dispatch through the sheriff's office. Uh, and, uh, they, you know, they're usually dispatched out as. Um, an assist to community mental health or, uh, an assist to transport or paramedics for somebody that wants to go to the hospital. Because they're in some kind of crisis. Um, and so, you know, that is dispatched to the officers and, and they respond. And once they're on the scene and the scene is secure, then that's when the secondary services come in. It's during that. Initial time on scene when the officers are the only ones there that things tend to either escalate or tend to go horribly, right? Because, I mean, police officers are just not equipped to handle these types of situations. That's not, that's not what they've been trained on and. That's why this nationwide is such a huge push, right? Is everybody is recognizing that. The current system is flawed and it's not, it's not working the way that, as society would want it to be. And like I said, so there was four of them yesterday just before noon. Um, and it's, I've said this before and now I'll say it again, but listen, I would love for the police department to get out of. The mental health response business. There are so many other things that, that they should be doing, public safety wise. However, there just is no other mechanism to deal with that. Um, and I was just talking to Chief Hobbs, um, outside here about the amount of time that. And resources that, that his staff puts into these calls too. A lot of just our standard medical assists are actually. A medical assist and it's based on some type of mental health issue or drug overdoses. I mean. Um, you know, all, all these things are all interconnected and, and they are really taxing on our resources. So when we talk about. Money and cost and what we can allocate for something. It has to come from somewhere. And I mean, obviously we're already, we're already doing it, but that doesn't mean that that's the right model. I mean, I'm not advocating for taking police department budget money and spending it on something else, but if that's the model that. That the community decides that they want to go with, then, you know, that's, that's what we have to do. But. Uh, there just is no. Like I said, there's no other current option for the way that in our county, assistance functions. If there's some responses will be done by community mental health without police. Some responses will be done without police by emergency medical services, but it's very, very few. Uh, and that's just because they're not equipped to deal with. The situations either in their current. So it's really, really just a giant. Mess right now, for lack of a better term. And those, that process like, so that, that mental health call and say that we go on. So we go on and then we have to wait for a response from community mental health. If they're going to petition this person to the hospital, if they think that they're a danger to themselves or others. Um, so we may have to wait for them to respond. If they're unavailable, then as a first responder. The law enforcement officer can do that. So they can accompany them to the hospital. But then we have to wait for transport because we don't do medical transports. So then HVA has to be called. And so something that in a lot of cases, probably could be handled with conflict resolution or, um. Just pushing people towards services that already exist that. Law enforcement officers don't know about or familiar with, or don't know really how to get people in touch with. Are escalating into extremely time-consuming situations for everybody from. You know, the men and women who work for me, all the way up to the hospital staff that have to see these people when they come to, you know. Psych emergency services, because that's where they end up. You know, so the, the discussion about the money that's already been budgeted and, and, you know. How, you know, how can we maybe use that going forward, right? If, if, if we're not gonna use it for the social worker program, which. Is, that's, that's not gonna have not been successful anyways. Um. So if you're gonna use it for consulting, if you're gonna use it for a point person to be the, you know, intermediate contact for all these things. From my perspective, as somebody that deals with this every day, that seems like a logical next step. Because even, I don't have anybody on staff that can. Make those connections. We just, we don't, we don't have the manpower, we don't have the, the time and we don't have the expertise. Now, if that person was to reach out to us, I could give them all the numbers, all the statistics, all, everything that they need and how we currently do things. And then they could relay that into a, you know, like we're talking about this county Y program, all those things, but it's, like I said, it's an absolute mess. And what we're doing is not working.
I appreciate everyone for sharing that. I hope, and for, I know that we have, um, you know, to do a couple of numbers. If there are questions or things that are coming up in terms of, you know. It being helpful to conversation, I think, maybe all of that. So I encourage people to do that as well. I'll just say, sort of as an aside, so my last position, uh, before I sort of transitioned and before I come talking, I worked at Ozone House. And so. I know about being on call at two AM, going to, to, to hospitals and, and working with young people. And I think that, you know, similar to what you mentioned, it just isn't in the capacity, right? Of. You know, we're asking so many people to do so many different things and often file over work, which is something that I think in nonprofits, particularly, you know, like nonprofits doing like. Social work and crisis management. Sometimes it's easy for that to happen in communities, but it is not sustainable, you know, and so. Having, you know, mapping around who's already doing this work, who has the expertise to do the work. And then how do you all come together? Or what I hear you saying is, you know, connection meetings, of conversations to build really good relationships. Both in the world to, to nonprofits, like to an organization like ozone house or, you know, neutral zone in Ann Arbor that works with young people like. That moves the world to those organizations to have great relationships with, with law enforcement, to have good relationship, uh, with council members. To be able to do, uh, referrals and be one handoff, like. And so I think that again, some of it is. Getting someone to come in and maybe support that bigger picture is what I hear has come up for people, but maybe it's not having one person. Create the program, do the program, and then get called at two AM. To then leave the work. It, it, it is, it's simply not, um, sustainable. But what I hear you all saying is. The need for maybe some like mapping around like who currently is doing that work and. How you build those relationships and stay up to date, like you've got people who are on council actively involved in those conversations. And then like, what do you put money toward? Which I think is the conversation that we keep coming back to anyway. What are the things that just need more time, intentionality and focus? And then what are the things that also need, um, you know, some financial support? So what I like to do is, I like sticky notes. Um, so I'm going to pass them around to both. Uh, so both could just take a couple blue and a couple pink. We are at seven forty-one, but you want to be conscious of our time, because I know that we said that we would wrap up, um, around eight. So. There are, Andrew, could you go back to it is, I think, maybe a slide before that, we're having a question, question. So you all might not be able to see that. Okay, perfect. So on the blue sticky note, I'd like you to maybe think of, um. From this conversation or from the role in which you sit in, again, what are those? Key areas of focus for twenty twenty-three? So that's what the blue sticky note is. Uh, the blue would be, uh, what are your key areas of focus for twenty twenty-three? And that's partially based off this conversation or the role that you're coming into. And then for the pink is what maybe seems like an infrastructure, financial like. Capacity, like what seems to be something where as you all are creating this budget, there should be some attention to, or there should be some things that are maybe earmarked. Okay, that could be one again, okay. Uh, blue would be, uh, yeah, the area of focus for twenty twenty-three. So you could pick three. And pink is infrastructure. However, you can write, as long as they're color coded, you will. I write big, so sometimes I do more than one sticky note, but I often know people who write incredibly small. So blue would be, what do you think are the key areas of focus for twenty twenty-three? Pink. What are things that maybe need to be like earmarked in terms of when we're talking about your budget? Or what are some of these sort of like infrastructure administrative things that need to happen, uh, to kind of keep the ball rolling for twenty twenty-three?
So that's, did we put three on this, on you one or just?
Yeah, you can.
And then this is for, we're putting the area, so when we're thinking about the funding. One question I have, which is, um. Like when thinking about this and thinking about some of the things that we've talked about tonight. Like, uh, and I know we're not, this isn't the, but I know that we'll probably, we'll get more and we're actually in the budget conversation. But then I think about things like, okay, so what does it cost to moderate an update? You know, like if we're saying like, um. You know, is it five thousand dollars? Is it fifty thousand dollars, right? So when I think about some of those things, I'm not like, well, I'll just name that that's gonna be something that. As we get more of that, that'll kind of help to. Make things seem more specific and also like how, what, what we have that we're actually working with, um, in order to, to fund some of that. Cause I don't really have a sense of what it costs for us to be able to make sure that we can process things by credit card. You know?
So, so Councilmember Simmons, as a part of the budget process, um, I meet with all the department heads. And if one of the goals falls within your department. Then, you know, you put that into your budget. So you're responsible for, you know, getting estimates and quotes. And we started looking at, you know, systems that will work for us. And, and when we submit the budget, that's the number that's going to be there. And council can say yay or nay or not to exceed. So, so it, it goes along. So thi- these goals are really helpful because then we take this information. And if money is needed and resources, you know, we go and start pricing those things. If you have access to do some kind of engagement, you know, whatever, we start to price it and see what that looks like. And so. When you see it in the budget, we can say, well, this was according to the goal. Because it's gonna take this many hours, a person of this, you know, making this amount to do this. And so this is how we came up with that number. And can you, uh, try to share more too? Cause I know that we were talking and, and we talked about, we're talking about the five-year infrastructure plan and. Thinking about some of the current realities and maybe take us off for a new generation. Can you maybe share a little bit more about? This is what we're working with, even if it's not the dollar amount, but sort of just the bigger picture. Absolutely. So if we, um, and I hope that we do, that we get to the point where we can prioritize infrastructure projects. Um, and so as, as a part of the budget process, we'll treat it as we did the motor pool. If it's something that's really huge, so each year, well, council approves the budget. They say, you know, we're gonna set aside fifty thousand. For, you know, this garage, you know, we're working on this garage because we know that it's gonna fall apart. So as a part of the budget process, we're just setting aside, we're earmarking those funds each time in order to complete that project. And so we do that, you know, we start prioritizing. And so DPS needs a lot of work and Bonnie's done a good job. And trying to say what we can do now, you know, immediately with funds that don't cost as much. What things can wait that we can, we decide. And so that's what that will do, so that we'll know that we're consistently. You know, keeping our infrastructure, um, you know, in good working order. So. Now, folks are filling the thought. Were there any other, uh, things that people wanted to know or clarification and questions that people have? And then once people are finished with those sticky notes, then you could kind of go from. My left to right in that circular motion and ask them back. I don't have to hold on to those, but I think that works.
We're ahead of the class.
It's gonna get to a point where it's like, he's not having a curse. So I know when I got to move my question, I do want to have everyone's time. So just to reiterate, I know I didn't share and retail some of those recommendations and next steps, but sort of the first initial step is. I will connect, uh, with Andrew and Francis. I'm also happy to connect with any of you all, uh, individually, um, and. Just because I have a community connection, but we'll sort of talk about, uh, what's the, as a helpful next step. I will take these in addition to the recording and the conversation that we had and I'll make some updates. Form, um, so that you all have that to work off of. But some of the things that, um. But some of the, uh, things, I know you all are going to be working on the budget, um, some longer-term, uh, recommendations. Really sort of, uh, just like your earmarking things on the budget, having some dates and times in the year, uh, for some of these strategy conversations. Um, another suggestion is again, you know, fourth or fifth month in advance. Having the conversations around like what are the goals and what are the rules and high priority for the next year. So then I think it's, it's twofold, right? Then, uh, the department can go back and, you know, take your goals and then. Find, uh, the resources and, and, and sort of do some, some price gauging. But then also, um, you are sort of knowing in advance what support they need, right? I think it is really helpful to find some ways to be, you know, consistent about that. Another thing that, um, sort of on this that you're doing some mapping, right, of like. Who are your partners? Who do you have good relationship with? What are the expertise in this room already? So some things are just a matter of, of a phone call or having someone who can, you know, sort of share with you all. Things that maybe didn't take upon this yourself, uh, somewhere to maybe that Facebook report, like, you know, um. Also, uh, something like keeping folks abreast, right, of what's happening in relation to the community that's helping. So there will be some updated, um, recommendations for you all, but I'm also happy to talk, uh, in addition to Andrew's. Like talking with people offline, um, and maybe in the future even kind of doing some support, uh, whatever might be helpful for you all. So before I close this out, um, Francis, Andrew, was there anything you all want to share? And then I want to pose a closing question that everyone has to answer, but.
Is this our closing questions? No.
Can you go to, um, I will thin out if it is helpful for people. I know sometimes people are strapped, so it's hard to do sort of the additional work. But I will send out a couple key questions, um, that I can send out in a brief gap before the Republicans vote, so I can do that. So this is my final question for folks. Like what's your personal goal based off of your role, um, or something that you're hopeful for? Uh, within City Council or for the city of Atlanta in twenty twenty-three? So that's my closing question for everyone.
You asked who's that?
I want to use the Pavilion, uh, restroom at Parker's Summer Fest this year.
That was on my list.
Very specific. That's what I want.
Go celebrate everybody's goal with equal excitement.
What about other individuals?
Um, I, I guess my personal goal, we, to like, like we were saying earlier, um, just increase communication between us. The city and, uh, the citizens, just so they know more about what was going on, especially to you. So the youth, you know, really know too much about what's going on in the city. So yes, complete communication.
I think Brian's really a lot about infrastructure. Like I want to make Bonnie's job easier. Staff, because they do really, really important work. It's like the stuff you don't think about unless it doesn't get done or they. Can't get to it because they again don't have a staffing or tools or whatever. And so to me. Like that's an area like we really need to make like focus on, like our, you know, folks over in B and W and, and making sure that they have what they need. Uh, because they find our city run. You know, um, and you know, just what they do, street cleaning, you know, traffic or, um, recycling, I mean, all that stuff. So I don't know. Yeah.
I want to be able to take an online payment.
One of my personal goals is to be, um, more visible in the community. I want to be able to articulate to them, uh, what we've done here. So I haven't done like any town halls or anything like that. But I think, um, like after we approve the budget, I just want to hold a couple subject, a couple, you know, meetings around town and saying, this is what we approve. This is what we're doing and kind of touch the people a little bit more.
I want engaged and happy staff who have the tools that they need to succeed at their jobs.
I'd like to have a structural balanced budget.
Anyone else?
On top of, yeah, just really getting into the community, um, within this new world and getting to know folks and, and the needs. Um, I think for me, my personal goal is to figure out how can I best be a catalyst of collaboration across. The eastern side of the county specifically, so with our neighboring municipalities, it's a really big focus of mine. Um, to work better with our neighbors, to be better, you know, better neighbors, you know?
So one, I would like to thank you all for inviting me here.
I just knew you were going to say remove the pin.
Everybody's helped us. You know, it's just like, I, 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 I will honestly, our community be packed up. And we have, you know, events and things like that, but I mean, even to the core, you know, and do have people. Be able to meet their needs for the, 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 what you think.
Um, so I think about like the ways that we can. Put periods on certain conversations that we've been having and move forward and. Um, thinking about, it feels like a good time. We're in our bicentennial year, you know, it seems like. You know, that there's some things that we can kind of say like that was our past two hundred years and here's where we're going forward, um. And, um, so I'm excited to think about that with folks and to really be trying to think like having a vision that's both like obviously. Addressing immediate needs, but that we're looking out for, you know, what, what things will look like in ten, fifteen, two hundred.
I want to see a satisfied, uh, satisfied employee stack that are healthy both mentally and physically. That know that they're appreciated and they can come in and do their best for the community, because ultimately. If they don't feel appreciate, appreciated, they're not going to make it so they can feel appreciated.
And I would say one of my personal goals is being a new council member is to be active in the community. And to just bring more awareness to the different programs and things we offer here in the city of Atlanta.
I got one more. Solidify and develop for Water Street.
And then, Nancy, one?
So mine has been for a million years to, uh, get the fire department fully staffed and I am still working on that.
I would echo the chief and also the police department.
Um, in addition to president, but also being, I want to be intentionally engaged with employee needs and concerns to improve our cooperation with the whole.
Well, I think it's my contact information, I think it's the last slide if people do want it. I want to thank you all for your time. I know that you all have had folks facilitate this work over the years in different ways. And one of the conversations and the work that we tried to do is maybe have a more holistic conversation. So I know that sometimes it might feel like we talked about a lot, what did we get done? My goal is to synthesize some of this for you all a little bit more, um, and be as supportive of that community. Was to make our community healthy and happy and thriving. And so if you have any questions, I'm happy to talk with folks. There will be some follow-ups, uh, but I just wanted to thank you all again for having me.
Thank you.